Good evening, everybody. It's six in five PM. This is a regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me at the site for political meetings. Very much. Members present include myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Bordenheim, Supervisor Michael Albert, Engineer Melissa Hodgson, Solicitor Ron Kersen, Director and Manager Julia Pilika. Now, since there's an executive session this evening from five ten PM to five thirty four PM regarding litigation in the back nine matter contracts regarding your property personnel and security matters. There are no meeting minutes this evening, so we'll proceed the consideration of the bills, obligations which total one hundred twenty one thousand one hundred and forty one dollars and eighty five cents. Do I hear a motion on the bills?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Stilvenheim. Do I hear a second?
I will second. Second, just out there. Question? The various lit associates, what was that? What was that for?
Very nice and associates with the engineering firm that's handling the base two market marshals falls.
Of Marshals Falls. Is that? When it comes to the general fund, because is that been spent down already the?
Um, because that's part of the grant. It's getting classed into one spot and then moving. Uh, that would be reimbursable under the base.
Oh, once we get paid.
Yes.
Once we get paid back.
Yes.
It comes. Yeah, gotcha. And the marquee roll-off container?
That's for spring cleanup.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other question? All the paper on the bills?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, solicitors report.
One moment, Mr. Karen. On the last couple weeks, we've gone up in spend with respect to dealing with the mountain madder case or with a case management conference and I believe on the first Friday in June in which I along with the other attorney and various individuals on both sides appeared. And the judge set various deadlines. For example, he permitted sixty days in which he takes discovery. Uh, he also set a deadline for the pre-trial memorandum. Uh, he also scheduled the time that we could so view detract a question. And then I believe that matters set for hearing uh, in August. If you can see there is twenty and twenty first, twenty second or twenty first, twenty second, twenty third. I don't remember right offhand, but that's where that is. Also, I attended the planning commission meeting that I can also review. There was a sketch plan that needed review along with the a review regarding the water gap recreation center project. And also there were a number of emails and other things that came in and that looked a little bit past cover or so weeks too much I responded, but that pretty much is it.
Great. Thank you, Ron. Missing anything on engineer side?
Yeah, so we did a couple reviews, one through Water Gap Wellness and one for some till sewer authority land developments. And we're working with Public Works to move along the mission loss.
What's the water gap wellness about their?
Their, their.
Something accessory building?
Yeah, the recreation building. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
Uh, I have a tiny amount of bad news. Uh, the public mountain visitors, we ran out of regrets. We did not get it this year. Um, but Alex and I are pursuing another grant opportunity that the township.
What did we submit that one for? Was that for the security cameras or?
Uh, that was not for the security cameras. That was various park upgrades.
Environmental advisory council, Pat, do you want to?
Yes. We got a pretty active meeting this, this week before. Uh, we, uh, uh, the first thing is that we're, we're really concerned about reaching out to the public and getting more public input in regard to what the concerns are that, that people have. And we have some ideas that uh, we'd like the supervisors to consider. Uh, and I'm gonna let Brett talk about that. Code, okay, that you wanna do, that you're suggesting. And then, uh, we, uh, uh, also finished our list of priorities uh, that we think are the priorities. We'll call the, the group voted on. And I'll just read them, read it's quick. Water quality concerns, sewage, stormwater, um, P F A S. I'm not sure what that stands for. And, uh, and for, uh, the chemical issues. Um, and then conservation and ecosystem management, sustainable practices, uh, which will include public education, EIC evaluation of uh, of county matters. We're concerned that, that we're not sure we have a good uh, interaction with like the planning committee and, and others to understand when their issues are for them to understand when we think maybe, uh, environmental issues involved. So we're gonna keep working, keep working on that. Uh, and then the last one is, uh, and it was interesting. I, I, I thought it was kind of look high in the sky, but it's preservation of peace, quiet, natural beauty and, and scenic uh, uh, mutations. However, when I looked at the environmental council handbook on the back of it, there is the, uh, the constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Kind of says the same thing.
Yeah.
And that's what the person wants to be doing. So that was good. Good work. In line with the God's institution.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, we've been concerned back and forth, talking a lot about, uh, Buttermilk Falls. And we're hoping that, um, you fellas will consider having a plan or at least a, an approach to, uh, considering that there are several pieces of property around, uh, Buttermilk Falls that are for sale. And trying to decide if, if it, we don't have the money right now, but trying to decide if we could raise money or if we are interested in trying to preserve Buttermilk Falls. And personally, I only live very far from it and I love those falls. And I go over there and meditate there. So I, they're, they're lovely. And we're hoping that we can do something more formal than having a plan, um, to think about it anyway. Well, Brett, do you wanna talk about this?
Oh, look, you see your shining faces. Yeah, the one idea I had for community outreach was for you to consider there's a lot of people who obviously run two oh nine as a corridor to get through and up to their to other destinations. And I'd like to have a way for people and for residents as well as the non-residents to communicate with the township. And one idea I thought was having key, um, QR signs at, at major intersections where people, when they're stopped. And so Smithfield Township, welcome. How can we help? And they just click on it with their phone. They can do, fill out a, a three minute message and blast it onto the website, wherever on the website we choose to put it. But and for residents to do the same thing, have a quick, easy way for that's obvious to the public, how they can reach out to the township with their concerns, their complaints and such. And I, I suggest, this is all just for you to consider, um, that we probably want to put a paid person on the responses to this, uh, website. We'll take maybe fifteen minutes a day tops to take input, the suggestions, collate them into various groups where the group wants to deal with that issue. And have a regular ongoing, um, outreach to the public where they can just say, rather than have them like, I don't, you know, just be frustrated or say, we don't like this. People, there's a lot of confusion when our residents come onto the website. Where do they report? There's obvious complaint stuff, but there's also a fair amount of suggestions. So organize the site so people can input into it really quickly. In addition to the major signs, these are permanent signs, maybe half of those in the little round the township. And there could be other paper size around, you know, the cheap or small little flyer size that people could, could, uh, log on through. But have an ongoing outreach to the public, um, as they're in their cars, so they don't have to come in. It's nice if they can come in, sure, but it's not anybody else's. Not, we appreciate, but we, it's what we did successfully with the Rivers Edge.
Yes.
Uh, survey and, you know, that method probably worked going forward in form. I'll get into it a little bit later, but I had conversations about that sort of thing at PSAS that were pretty helpful too.
And that came up in our discussion right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Pat, just to get back to your point about Buttermilk Falls. I don't think we need a park play. You know, what we need is to see if we can acquire the land and uh, I've already set that in motion with, um, the Shawnee Commons, uh, group which is part of Wyndham. And actually, their village, I think it's, um, it's, um, what is it? Browntop or whatever it is, uh, Ridgestop connects with a trail and will go right down to the park. So they're very much in favor of it. But most of the area on the steep slope towards the bottom is owned by Wyndham. So, um, the general manager of, um, of Shawnee is going to uh, see if Wyndham would be interested in, in giving it to the township. That would be the biggest parcel we need. And, um, he's enthusiastic. So if we can get their interest there, then we can really start planning what part.
Should we write letters or something like that?
No, it's, it's.
Let's see if we can have a more, uh, defined meeting about that. So we know all of the puzzle pieces.
Well, I, I know them so by heart.
Well, I, I don't think everyone else here does though. So that would be, we can discuss that.
Well, we certainly can do it, but until Wyndham says that they're interested, we, we really can't do anything. And I put that in motion already. I'm on the board of Shawnee Commons, so I, you know, presented it last Saturday and it very much afford.
Yeah, let's talk about this in a more defined way where we can just kind of get to know all the information. Like, I don't know if you know everything about this. I don't either, so.
The one thing I mean, when I was on the EAC, it just, I'll just reiterate my thoughts on this, certainly comes to acquisition. If you're thinking on a recreation side of things, I think Buttermilk Falls is somewhat makes sense. On the preservation side, I personally don't think it's a high priority because it's completely undeveloped. You can't undevelopable. Um, indeed, it is possible in future. Our ordinances could change. Um, but there's certain state regulations that basically meant, mean you can't, it wouldn't be able to develop by it without doing massive ripping it all off and stuff, which you're not gonna be able to do. Um, so the goal is preservation in terms of that. I don't think you have to go that route and spend a bunch of, of you know, taxpayer money to do that because our ordinances are protecting it already and state rules are protecting it already. Um, but indeed, the idea is it would be nice to be able to have trails allowed to walk. I mean, that's a different conversation. We can have that conversation. All right. I do see there was like an actual request, formal request in this to delegate something to the Buttermilk Falls Development Committee. Is that or the presentation? I don't certainly.
No, uh, we did, Alec did draft a letter. I don't know whether I got sent this past week or not.
It was just, you know, okay, I.
Yeah.
I can address that if you like. Um, this is probably gonna be an issue that goes on for a while.
Yeah.
And it might, and nothing may, the current situation may not be may not work, but I would suggest that every year we readdress it, give them changes over time. And if Wyndham wants to put condos across that top of that ridge, we should be prepared for that. Like you said, it's undevelopable. It may be developable by someone in the future. And so we might wanna have a plan in place to preserve Buttermilk Falls. I think that's gonna be the, the key to the EAC's open space inventory and things like that on a yearly basis. That way we can kind of be at the ready with that. But I think we can talk about Buttermilk Falls more at length, uh, in the future.
Say.
Like a specific thing.
And I forgot to mention, we are also going to start a, um, uh, a regular public communication in the, uh, newsletter about what the uh, EIC is and how people can get in touch with us.
Yeah.
And then also, uh, use our website a little bit more.
Yeah. It'd be great to have a little blurb.
Yeah.
Every time, well, there's an email that goes out once a month.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what we're gonna do in there.
We'll do that.
Awesome. I eighty six eleven tariff.
Hello.
How are you?
Good to see everybody. Uh, yes, terrorism out of your I eighty six eleven Penda and maybe your D O T. Uh, regarding the Jersey side, we'll start there. We were all prepared, as I've mentioned, for NJ DOT's visual impact assessment update for the Rockfall mitigation project that was supposed to be in April. And then in May, they were gonna be doing the same thing, the visual impact assessment update and the cultural resources update for the retaining wall. And we have heard nothing about that. And I have not asked any questions about that. Because, uh, the, my plan has been to let May finish out occurring. Uh, and then in June, I plan to ask for, uh, an update on where things stand. Uh, we can speculate, you know, why is it? I, I, I don't think it's certainly not, it can't be a bad thing that there's yet another delay. Our objective is not to, to have these delays, but we certainly don't mind them. Um, there is a lot of scrutiny coming down by the federal government on where our federal dollars are being spent. I'd like to believe maybe somebody's looking at, why are we spending two hundred million dollars in seven years? And when done in the Delaware Water Gap, we have not addressed the real safety, mobility and congestion issues, short and long term. Um, so, um, I don't know that that's the case though. So I'll be asking questions about that and I'll be providing an update. Um, spent a lot of time over the past month and a half garnering, um, support for the Explore Act Gateway Communities Pilot Program, uh, effort. Uh, where we have nicely Monroe County Board of Commissioners sent a letter to the Department of Interior expressing their strong support for, uh, the Monroe County communities that wish to be included uh, to be considered. So that happened recently. Um, I, I'm happy to say that that was unsolicited by me. Like, as you know, I work the system.
Sure.
Quite a bit and say, you know, a, a letter of support would be helpful at this time. Um, with this one, I had a lot going on just to get all the resolutions for the packet. Um, and they proactively, uh, initiated that letter, uh, based on the resolution did ask for that kind of support from local communities
Right.
and counties. So they were responding, uh, to your resolution. Um, so I think I commend them for that. That was really nice to have. Uh, where we are right now is the last one on the list is the Northampton County, uh, um, they're commissioners, but they're called Northampton County Council.
Right.
Um, so, uh, uh, Thursday night, I will be there before their environment, energy and land use committee. They have a resolution that will be on their agenda. Uh, we'll be discussing the merits of this thing. Their communities, their Delaware Water Gap communities, impact communities have passed their resolutions, which is other Mount Bethel, lower Mount Bethel and Portland. Um, so we're asking them to support, um, in kind, the same way. Assuming that goes well, you don't know its committee. Uh, the way they operate is the committee recommends if that moves up to full council.
Right.
It's at six thirty. Uh, but it will be on the council agenda, I believe, to be voted on should it be moved up. I'll, I'll be at that as well. So once that decision is made, you know, let's hopefully it's a yea, of course. Then I feel that we have the complete packet ready for our federal legislators to do their part. Um, so that's where we are on that. And I've heard nothing from PENDOT about, um, the six eleven projects. Same thing, you know, my bandwidth is only as big as it is. Um, I've not asked questions of them either right now because there's a lot of changes also going on with, um, you know, even personnel.
Sure.
Um, so I was just kind of taking advantage of letting that simmer. And I'm gonna hit that in June. Any questions?
Terr, you and I have talked a lot about the possibility of a tunnel.
Back to that, yes.
And no one has ever explored that. No one has ever wanted to explore it because politicians run away, they're very caught of it because it's supposed to be so, so expensive. I just read in the journal this morning with, um, Elon Musk, the boring company is putting in a bid to do a tunnel for I M track here Baltimore at a cost that's probably, um, maybe two thirds or less than what they're estimating it would cost. I don't know if there's any way of interesting them at us, but it would be nice to know if somebody thought it was possible.
Well, um, I, I didn't wanna take up too much time, but since, since you, since you bring this up, I'll bring up another topic. Um, you remember that we had passed a resolution asking for six eleven to, for the, um, yours is called the, uh, north, northeast.
Uh, the NIPA Alliance?
Yeah, the NIPA Alliance, as they were looking at, um, their transportation improvement plan, asking them to prioritize the, um, retaining wall project.
Right.
For now, so that it can be done in conjunction with their obvious need for to address their claim of the need for rock foundation. Well, the NJTPA, our North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, is New Jersey's, uh, the top of New Jersey's MPO that does that kind of thing. Right now, we're in the once every four year long-term transportation plan. And last night, Knowlton passed their resolution reaffirming their past three requests for a formal study from exit four on eighty to the Delaware Water Gap. Um, and in which you guys also passed a resolution in there. Um, so there's, I think there's sixteen resolutions listed that have been passed collectively over the past several years asking for this study. Um, we can't go say we want a tunnel. The minute, cause that's just not how it works. What we can do is we can say, not the study of the issues so that all possible alternatives can be considered.
I remember there was a visual of that in one of your presentations before.
Yes.
Did that come from you or did that come from one of the other finding agents?
So that was NJ DOT's response when we were saying, um, you know, why not? Why not, um, do other things other than blast the mountain?
Right.
What about these other things that can be done? So they came up with these, those schemes, those alternatives to show why it wasn't feasible.
Oh, all right.
A whole reason you saw that was they showed a tunnel that costs, you know, two, two billion dollars or whatever it was. And they said, see, environmental impacts are too great. And it costs us too great. And it's not, doesn't meet the, um, purpose and need for the Rockfall project. It would have to be a big project. So we're going after study for the big project.
Right.
Um, incidentally, on that note, I will say that the Warren County Board of Commissioners, they're looking at sending a letter to the U S Department of Transportation, asking them to, to look at this project in particular for, um, Kennedy scaled back. Um, and we're hoping that it will get that same kind of attention. We're hitting it from every angle. Um, I'm not necessarily, I wasn't gonna bring that here. We, we've gotten the support we've needed
Sure.
from Smithfield Township. Thank you for, for that. I mean, and representing your interests as well. Um, so we really haven't had the need. Um, I don't need to come back here and say, let's do another resolution that we've already done to reaffirm the following.
Yeah.
Um, we're working on it on the Jersey side and tunnel is in the picture.
Excellent.
Which is the point.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Out of supervisors comments, I just had a couple of things I wanted to know before turning the word to y'all. Spring cleanup was great. Um, we had a good response. I was happy to see, uh, a lot of the community out there. Marky was fantastic. Um, a lot of us went to PSAS and Hershey. That was really terrific. We got to network with a lot of leaders from other, uh, parts of Pennsylvania. Uh, I got some fantastic insight on the case management or request management type of software. Um, kind of like what Brett was talking about. And I have, uh, had one meeting already. I have a demo soon. Hopefully there's gonna be some others, but I look forward to some development from all of that. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else I wanted to mention. Michael or Robert, Nathan?
So I was gonna highlight, you know, obviously I was at PSAS as well. It was my first time at the annual education conference. It was interesting. Um, lots of, uh, statuaries, a lot of a little bit on some flood mitigation options and um, some housing, uh, discussion. It seems that, um, the need for affordable housing is a definitely a statewide issue that can be discussed. So it's interesting to hear that and to hear all the township supervisors that are back on similar problems. So.
All right. We don't have any old business of the evening, but we do have a consent agenda on new business. Includes the ratification of the special event permit for a meat sale in Hempins on May seventh and eighth. Uh, consideration to approve a special event permit for the fifth annual truck show in missing. And, uh, the consideration to appoint Robert Bordenheim to, uh, go over multi-disciplinary processing board. Uh, in place of our T P W director. Do you hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bordenheim. Do I hear a second?
Seconds.
Second, Mr. Albert. Questions?
You're, Robert, you have not been or you were all.
He was an alternate.
You're the alternate. Have fun.
Okay.
I can keep our mouths shut.
I like, I like to say in a backbite, let me talk to the command.
Any other question? All unfair?
All right.
Bye. Okay. We have a public hearing tonight on liquor license transfer requests, uh, with W G D D LLC. We're seeing we've got it down here for the record, Ron. We consider this open at six twenty eight, want anything here, do you want? Presentation, Ron, you really have to even take care of the forty?
Just, just a couple of items. Well, just so the public is aware, uh, under the Pennsylvania liquor code. A license can be transferred from one location to another. Or even from one owner to another, but in this case, it's simply a location chan- transfer to the same owner. From. Two seventy nine South Portland Street in East Strausberg to. A facility that will be located at twenty eighty Milford Road, also in East Strausberg. And. It's owned by. W. G D D comma LLC. So under the law, when a transfer application is made, there has to be a hearing so that. Information can be secured from the applicant and if there's anyone in the public. Uh, with respect to whether or not this transfer of liquor license. Would adversely affect the welfare, health, peace or morals of the township or residents. So that's the purpose of this hearing, it's been opened, and if the applicant is here. We will ask the applicant to present your position.
You want there?
Sure.
Kelly. Um, my name's.
Yeah, please.
Can you read it again, please? You just almost swear at one time, you told the truth, the whole trip, nothing but the truth.
Alright, so I'm Wanda, the owner of Wanderin Bar and Grill. Uh, March fifth, I had a fire at my last business. Well, now I'm hoping to move to here, that's it.
Yeah, the the only question I had, uh, the skill games that were there, that's no longer a part of this, right?
No, it comes along with the business.
Okay, alright.
Through my vendor, before you get the pool table and the games.
Okay, but is it the same, like the video gaming terminals?
No, it's not like it was, it's not.
Yeah, okay, that that that's all I was.
No, 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 it's something that was.
Yeah.
Something that all the barrooms have.
Okay, yeah.
Two or three machines.
Normal stuff.
Yeah, yeah, not, not a whole bunch.
Ma'am, could you tell me your, your full name again, you said it's Wanda?
Wanda S. has been sued, D E Y O N G, no U T.
And so, that's where we get the W G D D from, is that?
Yeah, it's Wanda Greg Dave De Young, me and my twin boys.
Alright, and your present location at two seventy nine South Portland, you said there was a fire there?
Yeah, March fifth.
It's across from the city, yes, right?
Yes.
And, and when was that fired?
March fifth.
And was it a fire that destroyed the building and could not be used, or?
It destroyed the upstairs three apartments. The building's barred, only that water damage.
Yeah. But the building could not be used at this point. And. The application is that it be moved to. A facility at twenty eighty Milford Road, is there something there already?
There was a restaurant bar.
There's a restaurant there already? I'm in trouble, there's, there's two empty ones there on that side, right near each other.
It was the alternative, BK Locker, Shakers, we walked way back to Shakers in the sixties, great answer, I thought it's great answer.
That's the one that's closer to, to J T I's, right?
Yeah.
And, and does that location have, have a specific name or not?
It's gonna be the Wanderin, but now it's nothing.
Okay. 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 And. Uh, how long have you been doing this kind of work?
Forty years.
And based upon that forty years of experience. In your opinion, do you believe that there is any adverse effect to the welfare, health, peace or morals of the township or the residents? In this transfer of liquor license?
Not at all.
And. Can you tell us? Why you think that's the case?
Well, I've been slowly moving in and I have numerous stops at the place every day from the neighborhood, the apartments across the street, the people that live in the back. Everybody saying wedding opening was so excited, they all want the two. Play, play games, and they all know me, um, local as you can get.
I say, just for the record, she's done a lot of charitable, uh, things, especially with the Monroe County hospice houses also.
Yeah, I do, I do a lot of good for the community.
This is on two oh nine, it's in the ED zone, just from there.
Well, that's, there'll be any questions, so you get paid for being lawyers, so. Two oh nine is in, in the ED zone, correct? And this would be a permitted use in that zone, as far as you know? Restaurant or bar?
Oh, oh.
Okay, I have nothing further, I'm not sure if the, uh. Uh, board has any question, then if not, certainly members of the public can, they may comment if they want.
I actually have a question on the process, because I wasn't here for the law law transfer, so. Obviously, this approval is continued on the PLCB.
Well, no, the, the PH, BLBC approval was continued upon this.
Okay.
We must get approval and then there's a resolution to be signed, then it goes to the PL.
PLCB still does all your big map out your diagram and show your order set, yeah, it will go, it's a long process to your approval, so they're the, they're the approving body, got you, okay?
I'm glad to hear.
Now, as the public. Yeah?
I, I'm just confused as to where the actual building is.
Do you remember John Gong's alternative?
Oh, John Gong, yeah, okay, that's, yeah, the Chinese food, yeah, okay, I'm good now. Sorry, I had to go back five of those.
That's more like it.
I know, good.
Okay, alright, good. I was gonna say.
To me?
Yes.
Just for the record, to read it. Who's getting named for the record for the two?
Ma'am?
Debbie. I, I've got Debbie, the gentleman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan Booth.
I'm sorry, Dan?
Booth, B O O T.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm John Dong.
We finished out there, Wanda.
Sir.
Yeah, so, um, my name's Jonathan Weber, with Marathon Properties, so I'm the landlord of. Twenty eighty Milford Road, uh, so just wanted to speak on behalf of Wanda, uh, we're looking forward to, to bringing her into the community and. I can tell some folks here know the history of the building, so it was. For probably fifty years or more, I don't know what it was before nineteen forty, but it was a bar and grill called, uh. The Shakers, uh, Shakers Inn, which was exactly what she's doing, so I think. You know, past tenants aside, this is exactly what that building is. Meant for, and I think she is gonna be a perfect long-term addition to our community here.
Awesome.
So, you know, I'm here to support her, bringing her, her bar here.
Excellent.
And what's your name again, sir, I'm sorry?
Uh, Jonathan Weber.
Jonathan Weber?
Yes.
One beer too?
I'll one beer.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public floor, I close the public hearing, Brett?
Does our township offer any, um. Uh, proximity. Restrictions to, like, alcohol sold next to one of our many grocery have places or churches or schools?
No, um, any of those types of rags are PLCB, but, um. In our zoning, as long as it fits the underlying district's criteria, it's okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, six thirty.
Same motion to close.
Motion number twelve. Right here, second, second, Mr. Bear, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Alright, now I obtain a resolution on the consideration, or a motion on a consideration. Of Resolution Number five ninety five, approving liquor license transfer request. Do you want to hear that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion number eleven, huh?
A second.
Just around there, last question?
Just, uh, did we say two zero, eight zero Milford Road?
Yeah. All in there, hi, hi. Excellent. Regular public comments. Brett?
We're going with the data center. Uh, for consideration here to township.
You mean the. Ordinance to sort of increase the requirements related to this?
Yeah.
I think that's probably already coming up again soon. Um. Kind of was put on the back burner in relation to the other ordinances that we were doing. At the same time.
There's, there's. Do you want to just run down, uh, you sent an email out, uh, I was just, you guys have updated on, like, an ordinance, you mind just? Running that off, you can find it.
So, current updates that board, uh, has on their bucket, uh, things that I'm actively working on. Five oh eight, transient business, home storage facilities and lodging as it relates to, uh, housing crisis. Things next on my agenda after those come off, uh, are updates for wealth permanent ordinance. Our sales, and we still have the submission requirements and modifications policy, uh, as well as a minor correction for VOGA that was on, that our D C R brought up. Uh, things that Alex is currently working on is signs and lighting and data centers. Understanding that data centers were kind of potentially tables, so he could work and focus on signs. Um, next updates that Alex has pending, once those ordinances are complete. Uh, our parks regulation and grading ordinance, also known as dirty filth. Um, pending ordinance is not assigned to either of us, are the discussions related to recent parking requirements within the township.
So.
So, in, in short, uh, it will be coming up shortly, um, we're hoping to button up and move signs along a little bit more before we start that up. Uh, just so we can make sure that we're moving forward in a faster manner than normal, but it'll be moving forward soon.
And all those, I mean, there's been some work done on all those, they're also being done. Simultaneously, does it close to? It's not like that's just a list and, oh god, we gotta get to that one day. I mean, we did, oh, that was several months ago, we did already see some comparisons and some, some options, so. I would think it should come.
And how's Matt doing, the avalanche work? But he was dumped.
Uh, he is doing quite well, he's officially called up in all of the permit management, and he is working right now for his, uh, reviewing land development plans, and he's beginning enforcement.
Are you satisfied with him, is, I understand we could augment. His. To have another person there if needed.
Do you need? Hiring another example?
No, it depends how many hours he's doing.
Yeah.
Oh, um, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd have everyone working here for the township sixty hours a week. But, uh, I understand that that's not fair, he is moving through, uh, the backlog that we have very, very exponentially, so he's making great comments.
I mean, I know, I, I'll just say, I mean, I had a conversation with him, uh. Couple weeks ago. And, you know, just trying to really understand how much time he's spending, and it does sound like, and based on the invoices, it's probably about, close to about two days a week. Um, and, um. But, uh, highlighted, you know, on certain things, it'd be nice to maybe break to have that up to maybe closer to three days a week. Um, and he seemed like that was probably a direction he was going, I do understand there were, there were toss out some staffing changes at some other townships, and therefore. Um, he was getting pulled away, but I think. I'm hoping that that is gonna end up happening, especially if we start, once we start. Pumping these ordinances out, and he's not drafting ordinances for us. Um. But, uh. Once we start getting those out, we have discussed like that there's, he's supposed to review, um, those and give a lot of feedback, which luckily, being. His supervisor did already on some of our, our drafts, and he actually looked at the sign and ordinance already and sort of made some, some, some comments, so. Uh, yeah.
So that's great, so you're kind of keeping an eye on him?
I managed to have a conversation just to understand, I just highlighted my personal view that, you know, a little bit more might be nice. And that's in our, it's already in the contract, we don't have to change the contract, that allows him to, to do more if, if there's a need.
Really, one thing I think is missing is, we talked about a, uh, permit, um, system for clean soil coming into the.
Issue.
That, that was, uh, it, when we spoke with John Tressler about that, he called it a grading ordinance, so I've got it labeled as grading ordinance, AKA dirty bill.
Finally, about my question, council. How much money are we spending on? On, uh, not man or? Are they kind of, when they lose their case, are they gonna pay us our fees? Council?
No, that's not the, that's not the rule in, in the United States. United States rule is that everyone pays their own lawyers, unless they're a special item. Race discrimination, sex discrimination, age discrimination, something like that. The American rule is that you already pay your own lawyer, can sue to try to get it done, but it's a super.
Usually takes something pretty egregious to get fees or sanctions. Okay. Right? We're spending a lot, it's right on that.
Again, the suspect classification.
Yeah.
For suspect category, like again, we disable age, sex. Uh, race.
I just need a lecture on law, I really don't, I just curious how much money we're spending on this particular thing, and if there's any chance. Your, your time will be renewed later.
If my rate would be greatly increased, you would be spending a lot, if you're not.
Thank you very much. We're trying to get you here, yeah.
Uh, I have a brief question for council, so we're looking, um, myself and, uh, partners, we're looking at an affordable housing project that's in the ED district. So I understand the ED district, which is Milford Road, um, two oh nine and, uh. Part of Independence Road, you're looking for mixed use classifications, so you're looking for a mix of commercial and residential.
Yeah.
You don't allow pure residential. I didn't see anywhere in the ordinance, I may have missed it, basically what that mix is, so we're looking, you know, for affordable housing, obviously we need as many. Housing units as possible, is there a percentage, or is there kind of a? Is this in a case by case basis, when you're talking about the mix of commercial and?
I think it's presently like seventy five, twenty five mix, but basically, the ground floor has to be, uh, one of the vibrant commercial uses. Right.
I mean, if it warrants highlighting at the last two projects meeting, there was another developer here speaking specifically on this subject and. Um, together with. United Way that was here talking about the need for affordable housing and, um. You know, making a plea, because effectively, if you wanted to just do. Housing in the ED, you cannot do it right now, so there would have to be an ordinance change that allows some. If you were going to have some portion affordable, in what area, under what conditions, might probably be allowed to do that, nothing has been. Um, done by this group yet, this, um. But it's something that has been discussed for sure at this meeting, and you're not the first person to bring it up.
I think we'll probably talk about it, uh, a little more at length on the twenty seventh, our next meeting, so.
We'll put it as an agenda item, so we can actually deliver it.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, and if you want, make sure you give Julia your email, and then we can make sure you're on the list. Will do. Yeah.
I'm just curious, um, did the motion. From last week's, uh, planning commission. Make it to the zoning officer? Didn't make it to best yet?
Oh, with the, sorry, I'm not.
It was the, Ron, Mr. Eric. Uh, I can't remember, but I just got it.
It had to do with, um.
Determining whether the.
The wellness centers are in.
Yeah, um, I've spoken with Matthew about it, uh, like I said at the planning commission meeting, he's still doing a lot of research because that file was huge. Um, we're going to talk about it tomorrow when he comes in on Thursday, um, but he's aware of what they've requested, and he's doing the research to meet that determination.
Okay, then, I don't, if, I mean, can we talk about the effort we made to the county around taxes? Pushback we got?
Uh, we, we absolutely can, uh, I reached out to the county.
Cause we need to discuss that here in open, it's like, well, why don't we find out if they're paying their hotel tax?
Right.
And that was, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so we reached out to the county and said, hey, could you tell us, you know, do they have these forms, and they said, thank you, submit right to the request. Um, so we submitted the right to no request and got flat out denied. Um, so we had no luck pursuing that, um, we do not know if they have paperwork or if they don't, we do know that the applicant has said that they do. Um, but we've received no confirmation from the county, uh. Who leads because of the taxpayers' bill of rights, I'm not deciding that correctly, uh, but they did say, hey, here's why we can't provide this.
So as my reasonable understanding, what they do. They do indeed pay the tax. They just can't provide.
That, that's just not public knowledge then.
Correct, uh, I guess it has to do with the fact that it's tax, I, I understand the rationale.
Well, it's, it's almost no different than someone, you know, you, you can argue this is different than the public interest, right? Well, it's it's almost no different than someone, you know, you you can argue this is different than the public interest, right? But it's it's like. Did Michael pay his taxes? Like, it would have that type of difference, right?
Well, if you didn't, you if you didn't, you'd get a nice star on your sticker on your way down. Well, I I mean, I I mean, we wouldn't do that, because we're not their ones, but.
No, no.
The county would do, would probably do that. I would hope they would.
They 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 would, so.
It was a fair cell for sure.
And and that's what I was gonna say. I think we would know pretty quickly. They didn't, but.
But I don't know if the hotel tax falls on that same category.
Yeah, it might be apples and oranges, but.
I just, I don't know, if you don't pay the hotel taxes, who comes out of here?
There's still counties, we looked at the county's ordinance and and things like that, but I would say nothing's been.
Cause if you also. But if you also. Pay like, if you just said, no, I don't pay that tax, because I don't, I need to tell it to the county, because I don't have any, I don't have a hotel on the town, so then you wouldn't be able to come after you.
Yeah, it it's it's hard, because it's not for us to be able to enforce.
Yeah.
I know.
I mean. We wanted to get that information, and they said no, but.
Oh.
Well, thanks for your expertise, but try to find it.
To. Uh.
I have a couple detail, but there's no response.
Yeah. Uh, it's right, um to give you exactly what it is, um they stated that the records requested or contain confidential tax information. Uh within section eight, four through seven of the local taxpayers' bill of rights and are therefore confidential and unable to be disclosed.
So a yes or no is two, it's a combination.
That's what I said. I said, I just wanna get right in.
This is the right, you don't need to know the amount or like.
That's what I said, I said, but don't they pay it?
Correct.
It's it's very strange, because I ordered once uh about one of our local hotels here. Uh just to get a parameter of what room rates were and uh what um. What their business was during the year, and. The county told me right off, okay, April, they paid X number of dollars for the hotel tax. They paid X number of dollars. And I can divide it by the number of rooms and say, okay, um each room was uh was.
After after the wellness center?
That's what I got from them. They were from the county.
I don't think she has to go to a wellness center.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's the same thing you're talking about.
There's one.
So why don't you call them, Ron?
There's there's probably another way that we we could get. There's a difference between collecting specific like tax information versus like what you wanted to know, totally inquire, but. Alright, anything else?
I'm a last one.
I'm a loud one tonight. Um I was here when the gentleman owner of the. Place, the what they call the place on top of former water gap.
Water gap, oh.
Water gap wellness. He was here this last week, and it's really hard to get clear information out of him. And he's claiming it's an inn.
Are you are you talking about Lance Brett?
I'm talking about, I'm not sure, the gentleman.
The the gentleman who asked, they were standing at the guys, there was one person here and one person here?
Yeah, the guy on the far end, he said he was the owner.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's claiming it's it's an inn, and he's also asking, is it an inn and that? And I wonder if anybody is actually going up there and tried to rent a room. Also, we can confirm whether or not he is actually open for.
I'm sure he's not.
He claims.
Yes, people in the house, guys.
He's he's in a little fall, I mean. I don't, I I I can't imagine you can go in and get a room.
Well, if you remember correctly, the answer that they gave was, I don't know.
Right. He's playing whack-a-mole. It's really interesting to watch that guy operate.
He's not the owner, the guy, he's he's the.
Oh, he's claiming to be an owner.
No, 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 no. He said he makes sure the toilets work. He's he's the facilities manager. He's not the owner. There were two gentlemen. And then the other guy was the engineer. He was the engineer.
And the other guy, I'm sorry, I was.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright. I'm gonna have to make a motion to the chair.